All right, thanks for everyone for coming. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have a motion to adopt the agenda. Second, all in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Harrington and Ms. Gerard. I believe we got some number of special recognitions tonight.
We do. We have some students that we're going to recognize and some staff members that we're going to recognize. But we'll begin tonight with a student, Dana. Dana or Dana? Dana. Dana Gill. Dana, if you will come up.
I was told that I get to speak about Dana participating today.
I hope you do.
Please.
Why don't you introduce yourself, Mr. Hobbs there?
Yes, my name is Ray Hobbs.
Come on up, Dana. Come on up here. He's not giving you much direction there.
No. Dana is my new best friend. We just met like two minutes ago. And Dana entered a poster in the statewide school bus safety poster contest in Division Two, the grades three group fifth, and she won that division for the entire state. I'm here to tell you that it was her artistry skills are fantastic. Unfortunately, we don't have the boat with us tonight, but we'll get you a picture. We actually need a picture. Dana, what was it a picture of? Where do you go to school? Okay.
What did you draw a picture of? Just tell us.
My inspiration was from other school buses.
What do you want to do when you get out of school? Any idea?
No idea.
You have plenty of time, Dana.
If you want to.
And Dana went to Sugar Hill last year, is that right? Congratulations. And I think Mom and Dad are here, so we want them all up to take a picture, right?
Yeah, we want to get a picture with everybody. Come on up, please.
Come on up.
And congratulations, Dana.
Well done, Dana.
Everybody turn around.
I also think, Mr. Harrington, is there something in that envelope besides a certificate?
No.
Mr. Harrington? There's also a check in there that she received from her winning.
Congratulations, Dana. We are so proud of you. Mom and Dad want a picture? Are you doing it for them? Dana, are you taking everybody out for dinner tonight with your check? Or?
No.
No.
Extra cat around. Congratulations, Dana. Our next recognition is one of our very own, Dr. Brad Brown. Dr. Brown, come forward. Dr. Brown will be receiving a Jim Puckett Outstanding Educator Award from Gail and GASP. Congratulations.
And not to miss the importance of this, Jim Puckett was the head of the Georgia Association of Educational Leaders for decades. And Brad, one individual in the state gets chosen for that every year, and they couldn't have chose a more deserving individual. So we are so proud of you, and congratulations, Brad Brown. So thank you.
Well done. Next, another one of our outstanding staff members, Ms. Jennifer Westbrook, Principal of Mount Vernon Elementary. She received the 2025 Georgia Distinguished Principal Award from Gail and Georgia ESP, the Elementary School Principal Group. So congratulations, Jennifer.
And Jennifer, I was getting all those texts that day from all your fan club down there. We are so proud of you and the job that you do. And Jennifer, what are you going to do? Jennifer, what are you going to do when you grow up?
I'm going to try to keep doing this.
We're blessed to have you. Did your check fall out? I'm sure Suzanne got you one too.
It's in the mail. In the mail.
How brought that to the first person?
Oh, okay. He doesn't give.
I know. And then we're going to finish our recognitions tonight with a student from Flowery Branch High School, Ms. Benven Roberts. Benven is our 2025 National Merit Scholarship recipient, which is some kind of award. And we have with her the principal of Flowery Branch High School and Ms. Kelly Brumbelow, her star teacher, because Benven was the star student, so.
Now, somebody needs to explain the significance of this, because being a merit scholar, I assume you're going to do that, one of you?
Yes, I'm going to try to accurately describe all of her accolades. So just to give you some context, yes, I taught Ben for two years in English. I nominated her for Governor's Honors, which she went on to represent in communications. So she's a Governor's Honors student. Then she decided that she was going to take the PSAT, and she, just so you know, 1.5 million students per year take the PSAT to try to earn this award. And there are 16,000 semifinalists, 7,500 finalists. There's an application process, a writing portion, and she is one of 2,500 students in the entire country, which I think her mom said is like 0.06.
What was that percentage, Mom?
0.06.
0.06.
6% in the country. She was also our star student. I was honored to be her star teacher, so she's one of a kind, one of the best, most gifted students I've ever taught. And she's now at UGA in the honors program, and we're super proud of her. So that's right. Go Dawgs.
Wow. So it's a big deal. Congratulations. Mom and Dad, sister, come on up. We want to get you a picture with her.
And what are you majoring in?
I'm majoring in English and psychology.
And you're going to come back and work with us, right?
Absolutely.
Fantastic.
Yay. We will have a contract ready for you.
And for those who haven't had an opportunity to meet him, our new Flowery Branch, where's Jason Carter? Is he here tonight?
He's in the back.
Yeah, our new and improved Flowery Branch High School Principal, Joey Ferris here. So fantastic.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Ben. Keep us up with how you're doing.
The entire family. Okay, so that concludes our recognitions for tonight, and we are moving on to the next item, which is our high school exam exemption. Dr. Carter? We presented this at our last meeting to give you time to look over and think about this as a possibility. I know that you all have read, like I have, lots of things in the news recently about attendance rate and the lack thereof. So this is one possible district initiative that we might implement to try to combat excessive absenteeism. So Dr. Carter, you want to talk about the pilot last year and then what we're asking for this year again?
So the pilot last year, we did, just as a reminder, any student who had a class...
If you'd speak right into that microphone, so folks online can hear. Thank you.
Got you. Sorry. So last year, the pilot program, any student that had a class average of 90 or higher and missed five or fewer absences, it's a combined total excused or unexcused absences, could exempt the teacher's final at the end of the year. Does not exempt the EOC or an AP exam or the COV, which is the CTAE test. And so we have the percentages up there. If you look at the next slide, that we have the academic engagement improvement and the reduction in the absences. And then Ms. Gerard and I looked at the chronic absences in all seven high schools with all grade levels, and Flowery Branch High School had the lowest number of chronic absences. I think we were somewhere around 20.5, and then the next closest to us was like 24.6. So just right around 4% better. It's the only thing we can attribute it to, and it was interesting to me that the freshmen, when we started final exams, were like, "We didn't think you were serious about this final exam exemption." And so I know there's been some talk in the news, seniors seem to be the worst for us in Hall County, and that's another incentive that, just one more incentive we can use to get students in school and stay in school and keep them academically engaged.
Questions?
Questions, thoughts, comments? Because again, I've gone back and forth on this for 35 years, seen it work well, seen it not work well. And again, I do believe in numbers. But any questions for Dr. Carter?
I just want to say, I know one of the main concerns when you do away with testing is when those kids move on to college and all, are they good? But we are doing a lot of testing that's not just that, and of course, tests. If we weren't, I'd be more concerned. And I think the attendance every day does more than the score on that final exam. So I'm hoping that'll be a positive thing for all of our schools. We'll just have to try and see.
I agree with you. I think one of the reasons we moved away from it five, six years ago was we were concerned about that, but with the end of course test, the CTAE/COV test, and then the common benchmark assessments that we do, I do think our kids get a true test of what a final exam is like before they get to the next level.
And Deborah, you're also, you're very wise, because with a significant percentage of our students now either in AP, IB, or dual enrollment, or two, or all three, our kids are getting plenty of testing. And so my recommendation of the board tonight would be that you provide teaching and learning in the high schools the opportunity to pilot this. We'll bring back some numbers to you and tell you what difference it makes in terms of the entire high school population, but I make that in form of a recommendation.
Is there any way we can track some information on as they move forward? I know we don't have college information a lot of times, but is there any way we can track to figure out if it affects their college performance in any way? I know that would be difficult.
That's something Suzanne and I can look into. It's kind of hard to track those kids who, like, they go to college late. They don't go that first year, but then they go into college, and so it's kind of hard to track those kids, but we'll definitely look into it.
Other than that, I don't see a risk of it. I mean, if it improves our attendance, I think it's a plus for us, for sure.
I agree with you.
Do we have a motion to approve this policy? Second, all in favor?
Thank you very much. And Suzanne, you're going to, you and Jason will get that out to all of families, schools, parents, et cetera, ASAP.
Well, in fact, we'll start tomorrow with principals. We have a principals meeting tomorrow, so we'll get that out to them and then immediately begin the marketing of that. So thank you. Thank you for that. Next up on the agenda, we have graduation dates 2026. Wow, that took me a minute to say, 2026 graduation dates. Again, Dr. Carter, you want to have commentary on these dates?
Yes, so our calendar, our kids are getting out earlier this year than we've had in the last four years. That's a good and bad problem. The only problem we have with that is we don't get the grades from our dual enrollment, Duell Linear Tech, UNG until May 13th, May 14th, which is that last full week of school for students. And so the last, as you see there, we'll have to move back. The last day for seniors will be May 13th, and then we'll start graduations with Ivester and LCCA on May 19th. This will be the first time, just so you board members are aware, if you hadn't already looked at our school calendar, we will be having graduations Thursday and Friday during post-planning. Those are two post-planning days.
I have one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I attended Ivester Early College Graduation last year, and a lot of kids weren't there, and it was because what we were doing in our high schools conflicted with that. Is there a way we can make it where their tests don't fall on the same day as graduation? Because they weren't able to come. They had to stay at their high school, and they didn't get recognized that day.
We can, definitely something we can look at. Was it their seventh period exams?
It was, and so I think we probably can look at that and plan forward with that.
I would hope so. Yes, thank you.
Good thing to bring up. Any other questions or comments?
Gerard, will you be able to attend these graduations this year? I was just wondering.
Yes, sir. Barring any family emergencies, I will be there.
I'm sorry. You had a very valid...
Barring any granddaughters being born?
No grandchildren being born, I will be there. No indications now that one will be born.
And Dr. Carter, I don't know, we wouldn't want to change it this year, but in the future, we might want to consider a 5:00 PM Ivester celebration, at least running that by Michelle Hood and seeing if maybe she doesn't think the kids would come because they have so much going on with their traditional graduations, but that certainly would be helpful in terms of the adults that are involved.
Yes, sir.
I would like to recommend that the board approve that graduation schedule for, believe it or not, the 2026 graduation cycle.
Do I have a motion? Second, all in favor?
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Moving on to the next item under teaching and learning would be a policy revision, policy IFBG. I'm presenting this really on behalf of Dr. Turpin in regards to a policy revision. This is in response to Senate Bill 351. We already had a policy IFBG that was very similar to what this Senate bill requires, but it did require that we update some language. So what you have before you is that updated language. We had not updated, again, as I said, since September 2009. As you consider the proposed policy of the next 30 days, please know that we already were in compliance, quite frankly, exceeding what that of Senate bill has required in regards to the network, cybersecurity, and then student protection requirements of this new Senate Bill 351. Dr. Turpin wanted me to make sure that everyone knew that we use multiple industry-leading firewalls for network and data security protection, that we utilize an internet content filtering appliance, that both firewalls and content filtering appliances are continuously updated with real-time updates for threats. It's very interesting to go down to the Technology Center and see these threats being monitored on a large screen, as they really are continuously looking at what's coming in to protect us and our students. All student devices, so I want to make sure that this is clear, all student devices, both Chromebooks and Windows devices, are filtered when students are logged in with their credentials, both on campus and off campus. So we are filtering to keep social media off, to keep other platforms that are unacceptable to our students off. And in any situation, this has not happened, but if content filtering were to go down, then we have a mechanism by which we immediately shut off the internet so that the students would not have access to those sites. Per state law, this amendment will be on for 30 days. So we'll table it for 30 days. We'll ask for board consideration during that 30 days. We'll invite public comment during that 30 days. Any public liking to make a recommendation would go to the Assembly website on our Hall County website. On the right side, you will see where it says pending updates, and you can there, under pending documents, make any comment that you would like for us to consider while this board policy is under review. We will then ask for you to vote on this on September 22nd. The 30 days is a little before that, but the cadence of our board meetings would not allow us to vote before then. So any questions regarding that updated policy? Again, it's really just to get into compliance, to update the language with current internet language, since we haven't done so since 2009, and in compliance with the new Senate Bill 351.
By the way, 351 requires that this be in place by October 1st, so the timing is perfect. But again, if you have questions, contact Suzanne, contact Erin. But again, it does have to lie on the table for 30 days, so well done, Suzanne. Questions, thoughts at this point? It doesn't sound very sophisticated, but I do hope you heard Suzanne. We've never had a breach in our filtering software and appliances, but if we do, we basically pull the cord out of the wall and just say, we just shut it down until we get it figured out.
I'd like the community to understand, we've had all this in place way before the state required it. This has been an ongoing process with our technology department.
Okay, next on the agenda is an update in the Hall County School District Year in Review. So I had given each board member a copy, a very young copy. There is, of course, attached to the board agenda, and then Mr. Lewis is going to pass some out to anyone in the audience that would like one. This basically just gives you an overview of some data in regards to last school year. You'll notice at the top where it gives our number of 2025 graduates, the graduation rate that you see there is the 2024 graduation rate, because of course, the 2025 has not been released yet. As soon as that's released, then we'll update that. Probably won't happen until the end of September. I'm not going to draw your attention to all the data, but just a few highlights. If you look again on the front page, you'll see under dual enrollment that we had 938 students at the conclusion of the 2025 school year that were enrolled in dual enrollment, either on our campus of Early College, Ivester Early College, or on an exact campus of UGA, or on the University of North Georgia-Burnau, or Linear Technical College. Those are our major partners, although we do have students that attend other local campuses like Toccoa Falls. So we're excited to report that 938 students with a 94% pass rate. I think that is just amazing. And again, that is with all campuses. Students at Ivester have a much higher percentage of pass rate into the 98-ish percentile, but overall 94, which I think is extremely successful.
And Suzanne, would you please tell the board how many credits these would be courses passed at the university level our high school students had last year?
Over 3,000, 3,118 and .5. We don't want to forget that .5, right? So that many courses that our students took, 938 students took that many courses. So you can see that lots of them take multiple courses and are super successful in doing so. And then if you look in the bottom right-hand corner on that front page, you will see that 1,940 students earned a diploma seal by the senior class, a career-ready diploma seal, I should say. So that is signifying that students have taken a soft skills course, and they have done some community service, they've done a variety of things to earn that diploma seal, that is a state diploma seal. So again, another indicator that we are producing what I call work-ready, life-ready students.
One of the things that is not on this paper, but for over a decade, of the 14 regions in Georgia, Gainesville, Hall County has had the lowest unemployment rate in the state of Georgia for over a decade. That shouldn't happen, based on our population. I think what you're seeing right there is one of the reasons it does. Our individuals do an incredible job of getting folks ready to have character, to be part of their community, and to go to work, and to build their own dreams. So I don't think we spend anywhere near enough time trumpeting the unemployment rate in Gainesville, Hall County versus the rest of the state. And it's not a once in a while. It's over and over and over.
And then Mallon, if you'll go to the second page, please, on the screen, then you'll see, again, just a plethora of other data that we would like to highlight. Up in the top right-hand corner, left-hand, that would be left-hand corner, you will see our percentage of trusted adult data there, that all three levels, over 90% of our students say, yes, I have somebody at school that I could turn to and will turn to if I have a problem or a concern, somebody that I feel comfortable confiding in. So I'm super proud of that data, proud of all this data, but just wanted to highlight a few of them. As you move down sort of toward the middle, you'll see the 70, 90, and 73.3%. Those are indications of the high rigor that we have. 70% of eighth graders earn two or more units of high school credit while in middle school. That gives our students the opportunity to do that dual enrollment that you saw on the other side, right? So by students taking some of the high school credits that they need in middle school, it opens up their schedule when they're an 11th grader or a 12th grader, to allow them to explore other pathways or enroll in dual enrollment. 90% of our students earn at least one high school credit. And then 73.3% of all of our students last year who graduated had at least one unit of an honors or college-level class. So again, rigorous coursework that our students are participating in. As you finish that page, you will just see some other initiatives that we've had. We ask that our students, our seniors, to the extent possible, participate in a financial literacy course. It is a homegrown kind of course, a course that our best economic teachers have developed that students can go through. This is a course that I'm super proud of our students. This helps get them life-ready, right? It teaches them about insurance. It teaches them about interest, things that they need to know to make sure that they're ready to walk across that stage and do life, if you will. Then we, our hands-only CPR is a junior initiative, so you will see there that we had 1,200 students taught CPR by our community partners and our own nurses this year. And then our Constitution course, September is coming up, as our Constitution Week will be in September this year, but we have 7,766 individuals who have completed that course, really since its inception, that we have data for. So that's not last year only, and that's anybody that has completed that course, adult, student-wise. We have evidence that that course has been accessed worldwide, including Canada, China, and Indonesia. And then we end with some extracurricular accolades. So super proud of our students and our teachers for all that they've accomplished. This isn't everything, but this is what we could fit on two pages. And I would be remiss if I didn't shout out our wonderful administrative assistant, Selena Davis, who put this together with notes from myself, so.
Ms. Gerard, that's an excellent job, but you'll see a lot of that on social media. We've got a lot to celebrate in this district, and as Dr. Smith reminds us, we need to do a better job of celebrating it and making sure people are aware of just all of the incredible things that are going on in your local school district. So thank you, Suzanne. Good job.
Mr. Schofield, you wanted to talk briefly about our enrollment update?
And again, I don't have much to say, except we're not surprised. We actually think we're going to be down a little bit in enrollment this year, and when you consider that over 80% of our growth over the last decade or decade and a half has come from individuals coming from outside of this country, and with what's currently going on at the border, that should not come as a surprise. But we actually think we'll be down a little bit. Not going to talk about numbers tonight, because it's too early to tell, but by our next meeting, we'll actually have some enrollment numbers, and we'll even compare those to what's been going on in Hall County and the anomaly of a tremendously fast-growing community and a school district now that's slowing down for some reasons that you don't find in very many places. So not really much to say, not going to be a huge difference, but we do think we'll be down a little bit. Be glad to answer any questions, and we'll have a more granular report at our next meeting.
Then we will finish up with some field trips. I think there is just one to be approved, if my memory, yes. So line one, you all saw last meeting where we asked for Flowery Branch to be approved for their band to go to Orlando. So I'm asking for approval for that one. The other two can sit until our next meeting, the one to Japan and Australia.
Make that in the form of a recommendation that we approve the Flowery Branch High School trip to Orlando, Florida.
Do I have a motion? And a second? All in favor?
Thank you.
Jonathan's next.
Yes, sir. TAVT collections were just over $1.1 million for the month of July, relatively typical patterns for this time of year, but if you have any questions, just let me know.
Okay, okay. Didn't want him to get off too easy there.
East Bloss, same song, second verse, as Mr. Bales used to say. Down a little bit over same time last year with our East Bloss collections, but overall still in a healthy state. If you have any questions, just let me know.
Okay, we'll go around the room eventually here.
So we have only three project updates tonight for you, as we've completed summer projects, and everything seems to be working pretty well as we're back in school. First up tonight is Johnson High School addition, as it continues toward completion somewhere around January. The addition is, should be closing in pretty soon, meaning we'll get our HVAC on probably within the next week. We are beginning to work toward finishes, so we're definitely where we need to be with this project. It's going to be a fantastic change for Johnson High, as you can kind of see as you walk through how it connects into the main building. It's going to be a big help for them. Also, a few pictures in here of some of the summer work, just to recap.
Whoever's running the camera can take, the computer can take us back to that aerial view. to that aerial view of the addition itself. It's just a tremendous, that's not the one I'm looking at. That's the one right there. You can see on the bottom center with the one HVAC unit sticking out of the roof, that's the existing cafeteria. And this is going to do so much for Johnson High School in terms of bringing everybody for safety, security, as well as flow into one facility. That hallway goes out into the three-story addition. The little gym that, much like what we used to think of as the North Hall Theater, which should have been gone 20 or 30 years ago, is gone. And that's the new miniature gym that you see there to the left. But what an incredible addition for the nights down at Johnson High School. And again, that's really exciting times.
The renovation of the Learning Commons, it's amazing how much more room they have.
We, you know, we were concerned when we took the pit out that it was going to feel too tight. You know, the ceiling was going to feel low, but it actually is pretty nice. And it feels a lot bigger.
Reworking the storage rooms, it's just incredible what the difference it made.
Matt, when will we move into that building? You said it'd be done in January?
We think sometime in January. We're hoping to hit between semesters.
That's why I was wondering if we're going to do that or wait till later.
But we're still making sure that those dates are correct.
And Brian was over here pointing out that you had done away with the smoking area when he was there, and thank you for that.
Yeah, sorry about that.
It really was where you were pointing out. It really was in '73. It really was the smoking area.
One, two.
There's a reason Mr. Thompson is laughing. We could tell that story, Mr. Thompson, but we won't today.
Next up is North Hall High School. We are, of course, back in school, so the kids are using a path that they learned when we were building the Performing Arts Center. So, there's actually a sidewalk that goes around behind this addition where we can keep the kids safe and allow them to go to the two parts of the building since we're kind of building in the middle here. But the three-story is coming along very well. We're just making very good progress. You'll see some interior shots here. Should have the roof on pretty soon. And, but it's really remarkable to see from Mount Vernon Road the difference it's going to make.
And these two, again, will be our final high school update projects from the 10-year facility plan. And again, extremely well-needed, as Bo and I could attest to, with the 1957 North Hall High School and some of the shortfalls of the facility. This will be, again, just an incredible improvement for the boys and girls and for that community.
And last up tonight is World Language Academy. Not a lot to see here, but if you go out there, you'll see a lot missing. There are no buildings there now, so the photos that you see here, we were able to take during demolition, which happened over about a two-week period. It's really amazing how quickly buildings come down. But we are moving forward, getting ready to start now the site work, the grading, and eventually begin the construction of the replacement elementary school.
Can I ask a question about the car rider line at North Hall Middle School? How does that seem to be working out so far?
My understanding is it's working out very well. We haven't had any comments back on that. That's one that I wanted to get by and take a look at. I've not been able to get out there yet, but it seems to be working pretty well. The only comment that we had, actually, I'm remembering now, the principal is concerned that it's working so well that he's asking us to get some help in controlling the speed. So, I've contacted the county, because when folks are leaving campus now, they're just flying down railroad. So, I've contacted the county. We're working on whatever we can do to control folks from that, but it seems to be working very well.
I noticed that I haven't seen all the overflow out on Mount Vernon. It's nice, very nice.
Right, we, that's on our list of properties that we wanted to do a, wanted to do some drone footage of. But with all, it seems we just keep having these rains in mornings and afternoons that are kind of interrupting us from getting what we need. But we should have that pretty soon.
You might have a career in traffic engineering, Bo, when you decide to get out of banking, so.
Next up, we have funding requests. First item is additional funding for the Transportation Department of DHF repeaters. And I'm going to let Clay speak about this because I've said as much as I know about it.
We are nearing the end of that project.
Clay, speak right into that, would you, so that...
Thank you.
How's that? Perfect, perfect. We're right at the end of this project. Basically, we put an additional repeater at the top of Walker Mountain to work with our repeater at the Flower Branch Water Tower to even out our coverage. We currently have seven channels. And the only thing that's not completed, excuse me, we have eight channels. But the only thing that has not been completed is there's a high-speed line between the two repeaters that needs to connect, and that's supposed to be completed Thursday. We have eight channels. One of those channels, we are receiving some interference on. Our installers tell us that that is another company, most likely, that's using that frequency without permission. We, basically, the way it works is we pay to use a frequency for 10 years. And we just got that a few months ago, at the beginning of this project. So, we have the frequencies. It's just a matter of locating the company, and we've made the FCC aware of it, and they're working on getting that company off the frequency. So, currently, the seven channels that do work work fantastic, even without the connection. We can hear all the way to, one of our installers lives in Norcross, and he woke up one morning, turned the radio on, and they can hear it in Norcross. So.
The importance of this is that buses, we want to have 100% of our buses able to communicate with base station and emergency services at any time with the topography of Hall County. That is extremely difficult, and it is a challenge. And this is probably the first time in the history of this district that we're getting pretty darn close to 100% of this county now. And again, it's along the spill line, Hog Mountain Road, between the Chattahoochee Basin and the Oconee Basin. We've got a repeater on that tower. We've got one on the north end of the county on the top of Walker Mountain. With this additional equipment that Clay has now added, again, we should have 100% of our buses, 100% of our times that can get in touch with the base station and with emergency services.
And the bus drivers, each high school district has their own channel now, so they're all not fighting for the ability to speak or call in on the radio. So, it's really working out well.
Mr. Fleming, have you seen a difference in that already?
Mr. Schofield, the old fire station where we have our mechanics working out of on the Walker Mountain campus, they don't even need a base unit. So, a handheld is five watts, and they can hear just as crystal clear, whereas before, they couldn't hear a thing. They couldn't even transmit, so.
Fantastic.
It's doing much better.
By the way, while we've got you here, Clay, I stopped by there. And Clay keeps a couple of mechanics up at the Walker Mountain Fire Station. Those guys are incredible. They're changing oil, doing routine maintenance instead of making those buses come all the way down to Oakwood. And they are staying busy, and they're doing a great job. So, thank you for that.
Certainly.
Our second item tonight is Sugar Hill Elementary School. What we're looking at doing here is some additional sidewalks and removing some planning materials to increase the number of cars that can be loaded or unloaded at one time. And also, HVAC improvements is for a space within the building that does not have conditioning that we're going to have the school's SRO located in.
And if we could, since we have the new principal, I'm not going to say improved, because Deaton did a darn good job, too. But Jeremy Bowman has moved over with his assistant principal from Oakwood to Sugar Hill. Jeremy, talk a little bit about what we're doing here and why it's going to make a difference.
Well, thank you, guys, for at least entertaining the offer. At Sugar Hill, we have, this morning, as of today, we had 224 car riders. We only have four safe spots right now. So, they came this morning, pulled out all of our bushes because the students had to choose, do I get poked by the bush or do I step on the other side of the pole and be too close to the cars and have the staff members worried about my safety? So, Matt came out with his team and looked. And so, we have an idea where we can increase, go from loading four cars at a time, potentially loading seven or eight cars at a time. And so, it's a rare opportunity to increase not only our safety, but also our efficiency, and so that's what we're hoping to do with this project.
Questions, either of those? If we could, since we've already spent the money for the repeaters, I'd like to recommend that the board approve those expenditures as presented.
So, do I have a motion? Second, all in favor?
Lucky for you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
One question. How is Oakwood Car Rider?
Challenging.
Working out?
We're working on it. We're continuing to work on it. We're getting a lot of cars off the road, but there are a lot of cars. So, we are continuing to work on that, to work with Bev, and try to fine-tune that more and more.
Those of you that have spent any time in Oakwood know that that 70, 80-year-old facility had seen its better days. But those of you who also have been in the former World Language Primary School, those teachers think they've died and gone to the nicest facility they've ever seen. So, we were just, that gives you a little bit of an idea of just how way past time it was to do something at both of those campuses. But absolutely, so. Terms of the Stallworth Street property, again, we had a contract for $650,000. The people were not able to get financing. One of the churches in that neighborhood swooped in and said, we'd like to make that a cash offer. We'd like to do that immediately and use it for their services at their church. So, that'll be an excellent purchaser. Again, it's $650,000. It's a cash purchase, and I'd like to ask the board to approve that contract tonight. You've seen this before. As well as approve me as the individual who will sign on behalf of the board to make this closing happen. So, make that in the form of a motion, please.
Do I have a motion? Second, all in favor?
Thank you.
So, if we could open, if we could open the proposed projects. This is a format you've seen before, but just to give you a reminder of how this works, basically, if you look across the top, you'll see project name, description, preliminary budget, and then how we think we're going to deliver the project, whether that's a construction manager, a hard bid, or a self-perform. Anytime you see HCSD, that's a self-perform, basically us taking the lead. And then on across, you'll see whether or not it's a summer project. All of these are actually summer projects, and when we think we will complete. So, if I could just kind of go down this list. The first seven items are about our high schools. And I think the easiest way to look at these is to think about what each of the items of work are versus going through each of the individual schools. So, basically, what we're looking at is of our gym floors, basically, this is a refinish. We did this about eight, nine years ago. Looking to go ahead and do a full barrel sand, relogo, redo the logos and repaint. That's at East Hall High, Flower Branch High, Cherokee Bluff, and Chesta T. The other items are bleacher replacement. This is in the main gymnasium. This would be full bleacher replacements at Chesta T High, Flower Branch High, East Hall High, and North Hall High. And this is mostly based on just the age of the bleachers. We have issues with having stable handrails in some of those schools. If you've been to Chesta T and Flower Branch especially, those are very shaky. Also, just, these are very old bleachers at this point. So, we'd like to get these on our schedule to replace next summer. Next up is LED lighting. So, in 2014, we replaced the lighting at East Hall, Johnson, West Hall, and North Hall. The stadium lighting with, this was just prior to when we started going to LED. These are basically now aging out, with the exception, North Hall was replaced through a donation a few years ago. So, that leaves East Hall, Johnson, and West Hall to be replaced. And the other LED lighting item that I have here is Cherokee Bluff softball. It is the only baseball or softball field without LED. So, this would basically get us to a point that every stadium, every baseball, every softball field has LED lighting. Next down the list, the next two items, we'll go into a little bit more detail with the other information that we have about the state Capitol.
Matt, before you go on, I'm sorry, the stage lighting at the two high schools, that brings everybody up to the same level in terms of the quality of lighting for stages?
That's right.
Drama programs?
Right, what we did this past year is we tried something different. At Flower Branch High School, we went in and did a system, since we don't have a catwalk there, we did a system where we could actually bring the lights down so that the kids aren't, or anyone else isn't on ladders trying to adjust those lights. That seems to be successful, so we took that as our pilot. Our other two schools that don't have catwalks are Cherokee Bluff and Chesta T. So, this will catch all of those up. The next two items, number eight and nine, are East Hall Middle and North Hall Middle. Those two buildings were built around the same time. They have, if you've gone in those, the lighting is not as bad as it feels like it is, but it just has such a bad feel to it. It's, they're parabolic diffusers, which actually push all of the light down. And the buildings just, buildings just don't feel well-lit. So, what we'd like to do is do our HVAC re-roof and use some of our renovation funds from the state Capitol Outlay Program to focus on lighting and ceilings in those two buildings. And then we would look and see how much, how much that's going to cost, what our budget will allow, and see what else we might want to do. These buildings are aging, as a lot of things are. And so, we'd just like to take this opportunity to bring both of those up. Having some roofing issues at East Hall Middle currently, that's also causing us to be more concerned with the roof as well. The elementary items that you see down here really are Chickapi Woods and Flower Branch. What we're looking at doing here is, as well as the intercom and phone systems that we've been doing in the rest of the district, is to take the 14 classroom modular that we have at Johnson High, it's an L shape, and basically utilize that at two of these schools that are, that have, currently have portables at them. So, this would be at Chickapi Woods and Flower Branch Elementary. We can take that building apart and put basically half of it at each of those two locations. Sugar Hill and Spout Springs are just, again, completing our intercom and phone projects and Walker Mountain. We have three schools in the district or three properties with wastewater treatment plants on the property. We've touched East Hall, done some work there. We're working on North Hall. Walker Mountain is the other one. So, we need to do some work. We'll dig into this and see what it's going to cost. I'm hopeful that it's not as much as the $300,000 that we have listed here, but we need to get into it to see what our needs are there. And then the last item, number 15, is just for miscellaneous small projects. This is all just so that we can put it in our spreadsheet and track this and stay within our budgets.
Just to be clear, Matt, as you come up with those miscellaneous projects, you'll bring them to the board in a timely manner, and they will approve them. That just puts it in the spreadsheet for cash flow purposes.
Right. So, if we'll go to the other document, the other item that we wanted to get your, get in front of you tonight, we are looking at state Capitol Outlay Funding at East Hall Middle and North Hall Middle. This would be for HVAC re-roof and... This would be for HVAC re-roof and renovations. The quickest way to go through this, you're welcome to go through this in detail, it's actually pretty easy to follow, but if you'll go to the next to the last page in this document, you'll see a summary. First item there on each one is eligible state funds, and you'll see 100%, 80%. All of that is the same for us because we have so much entitlement built up. So, if we'll go back, see, is that page? Go one more, one more, right there. This will give you the summary of the total of the funding, which is a little over 2.3 for East Hall Middle and a little over 2.2 for North Hall Middle. And then the last page gives you the total amount, which is $4,607,910. So, what we'd like to do tonight, the process is that we turn these into the state. Those have to be in before the 15th of this month, which is this Friday. Would like to go ahead and turn that in tomorrow. They do their evaluation. They decide if it's approvable. Once that is done, we bring it back to the board for action, so I don't really need action tonight, just like wanted you all to know that this is what we're planning to do, and we'll bring that back to you as soon as we get it from the state.
Putting in a capital outlay reimbursement request is not a agreeing that you're going to do the work, so this has to be done by Friday if we want to be eligible for the $4.6 million of reimbursement for the work that we may do next summer. I saw at least three head nods.
Matt, I will say on the, with the bleachers, definitely there are issues with that. I go to a lot of sports events, and some of them are not safe. The rails are very wobbly. One thing I noticed too is when you get new bleachers, they need to address the bottom step. Our elderly people cannot step up to that first step, because some of them don't have, a lot of times when you have a walkway up, they'll have a little short step.
They should, they should.
But a lot of them don't have that, and I see those elderly people having to get people lift them up, so when we get new ones, let's make sure we take care of that almost too.
Thank you for that. We, we do intend also, not this year because this is all we can really handle, but next year, we'll be looking at a couple of the middle schools as well. We still have a few of those that need to be done, but we want to focus on the high schools first.
Thank you, Deborah, because I usually go from the top down instead of...
Dr. Swafford, Personnel Packet.
Yes, sir. So, you have in front of you the Personnel Packet. We sent that to you over on Friday, and so I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, but we would request action on that tonight.
Want to also thank Carla and Brad and their teams. They've drug their feet, as they should, on a few of our final hires because until we get butts in seats, we want to make sure we don't over-hire, and I think we're in a great position. But you are down to just a handful of special ed positions at this point. Is that correct?
Yes, we're down to one teacher position, handful of parapropositions, and then, and we'll be set for the year.
So, I would like to recommend that that Personnel Packet be approved as presented.
Do I have a motion? Second? Any other discussion? All in favor? Second? All in favor?
Thank you all very much.